Welcome Lowell to our third forum for candidates for Lowell City Council. My name is Jim Campanini. I'm the editor of The Sun, and this program is being brought to you by Lowell Telecommunications, our partner, and The Sun. We hope that you've enjoyed the first two forums this evening, and this will conclude our programming, and we hope you stay with us and will watch this continuation throughout the month as this airs both on lowelseun.com and LTC. The moderator for this evening's event is going to be Chris Scott. He's the enterprise editor at The Sun. Chris will introduce the candidates, and we'll start right away. We hope you enjoy the evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. With me tonight is Councilor Rodney Elliott, Councilor John Leahy, challenger Matt LaLasher, challenger Marty Hogan, challenger Bob Gignac, a member of the school committee, and Councilor Jim Leary. Just a couple of quick ground rules, people. There'll be no opening statements. You've got a minute to respond, and if some of you want to make a response in response to what someone else said, please just give me a nod, and we'll certainly allow that conversation to go forward. It's been very informative this evening. So without further ado, we'll start with you, Councilor Elliott.
Good.
And we'll start with the high school.
Sure.
Not double polls. What are your thoughts on the upcoming ballot referendum on the high school? And is it a valid test of where the entire city stands on the location of its high school?
Well, look, I've always believed, since I got involved in politics, that when you put something on the ballot, put it to the people, and whatever the decision is from the people is what we abide by. And I continue to maintain that. Moving forward, in fact, even in April, I initiated a motion on the floor of the city council in order to put it on the ballot to get, especially a project of this magnitude. So I support it being on the ballot, and if the people don't support or they vote no on it, then, you know, that is a concern because we do need to do something at the high school. So, you know, the language that was presented, you know, at the end of the day, I don't oppose it, but I just think that in order to get a true measure, a true understanding of what the people feel, we may have to take a look at it. And if there's no will to do that, that's fine with me as well.
Thank you. Councilor Leahy?
Thank you. I think that it's going to be a true measure of where people stand on the high school. I think that, obviously, people have done a lot of work to go out and get these signatures to make sure that it gets on the ballot, and I think that, you know, you have to abide by the wishes of the people who vote for this. So, you know, was it, maybe we should have put it on the ballot in the beginning? I'm not sure. This is the first time we had, you know, I've been involved in a project this big. So has it been perfect? No, but we're at the point now where the question is going to be on the ballot, and let's see what the people say.
Challenger Matt LaLasher?
I think it's good that we have a question on the ballot. I'm a little concerned with the wording of what is on there. I think that we may not get the exact representation of the will of the people because I think from being out and knocking on doors and talking to a lot of people, there are some people out there that believe that taxes are going to go up too high, and they may be voting against the question for that reason, which may not give us a clear representation of where everyone stands. And so we're going to put ourselves in a position where, when it's all said and done, did we really get the true understanding of where everyone is? So I think most of the residents that I've been out talking to and that others have have made it clear where they stand on the high school, and I think the referendum will be who the people choose, who the people choose to be in office come November, and at that point, I think we'll know what everyone decided.
Thank you, sir. Challenger Marty Hogan?
I absolutely believe that this will be a measure of what the people of Lowell want. I think that this was the right way to do it and put it on the ballot. Unfortunately, I just think that it came too late. I think that it needs to be abided by once we get through it, and I think we need to take it as the sign of what people want. I mean, November 7th, we have a lot of voters out there. People need to come out and voice their opinion, but I think as it goes, it is perfectly, and it's a show of what our system is, it needs to be on the ballot.
Thank you, sir. Bob Gignac?
Sure. I think the real referendum will be, as Matt said, is who's elected to Lowell City Council, and I think the response to the question will mirror exactly who's elected, whether it's pro Colley or pro downtown. I do wish that this occurred a few years ago. I think we're too late in the game. Each and every day that we wait, it's costing the taxpayers more money and jeopardizing the project, but I do think on November 7th, we're going to find out how the city feels about this project.
No, I agree with Matt and I agree with Bob as well. I think the election itself will be the referendum in regards to whether the high school stays at Colley or downtown. I am concerned regarding the project itself. I think ultimately, we need to have a high school. That's important, not only for the students that are going to attend there in the next few years, but also the middle-class taxpayers that will make decisions whether they still stay in the city of Lowell. I think the high school is that important to the city, and I think ultimately, if the high school, I voted for Colley, if the high school's chosen to go downtown, ultimately, we need to support it because ultimately, that's how our city is going to be successful. But I do agree, I think at this point, the actual election will be the deciding factor on what location that we're going to be deciding, either Colley or downtown.
Thank you. Anyone else? Claudia?
I just wanted to speak to the idea that brought up about the losing more money. I think that the MSBA, when they met last time, said that they would not, that it wouldn't be a worry of losing money. I believe that was stated. So I don't want to, yep, I don't, you know, I just, I keep on hearing about losing money, and, you know, I just think that it's not.
Jim?
Yeah, I don't think we'll be losing money. I think it is in jeopardy in terms of this continues, if there's a suit after the decision's made. I think at that point, the MSBA will take a look at it and say the city's not serious. So I never said you would actually lose money. I never said that. I do believe, however, the longer you get into a project, the costs can escalate. I think that's just a matter of, you know, simple fact. I think, however, when you look at it, be it Colley or downtown, we need to have a new high school. We'll get into the debate more regarding the reasons why, but if we don't have a high school that has the appropriate science labs, people who are having students, young students now in the elementary schools who are supportive of the public schools, they're not going to send their kid to Lowell High School, especially with competition from Lowell Catholic, competition from the other schools, charter schools are that much better than they have ever been. Greater Lowell Tech, for example, has better science labs than the high school actually has. So I think it's a question of making a decision. Ultimately, it'll be made. I voted for Colley because I think the benefits that are better from a cost standpoint, as well as a new building versus rehab. But at the end of the day, once it's decided, we all have to get on board and make sure it's an effective and successful project.
Thank you. Matt, did you want to take?
Yeah, I think Jim articulated some of what I wanted to say. I think what we're concerned with for the individuals that are saying there may be some cost increases as we move forward is, as we delay, those that are around the construction industry and have conversations and meetings with people that do this, they'll tell you that the cost does not go down right now. One of the things that I think would be good for us to be doing moving forward is to be trying to work with our legislature, with our representatives, to try to work on the formula that's giving us our percentage. I've talked to many people who are confused as to why, you know, Brockton would get one rate and why Lawrence gets another rate and why is Lowell in a position where it's getting such a lower amount? And it is a state formula, and I understand, and there is, you know, something we have to adhere to. But as time moves forward, one of the biggest concerns is if we delay, does the money get diverted somewhere else if we get too far along? And then, is there a way for us as Lowell taxpayers to have a lower percentage that we're going to have to pay over that process?
You all set, Bob?
Yep.
Councilor Leahy?
So I just want to go back to the question of the ballot. You know, the issue with the ballot is people need to know exactly what the ballot is asking, and the ballot question is asking to spend $352 million on the ad reno. And I think that's the piece that is missing, and that's what we have to get out. And as someone who went through this process 22 years ago to collect signatures to put this on the ballot, you have to stand by the people. You have to let them vote, and you have to give the information. And, you know, when you're putting together the question, you may not have all the answers. I'm sure there was a lot of thought put into it, but at the end of the day, the question should be, do you support this option and ad reno? And the cost should be included in that question. That would be my only addition, and we stand by the people at whatever their decision is.
Thank you. Everyone agree with that question?
Mm-hmm.
Councilor Leahy, we'll start this next round with you. Is there a limit to how much the city or the state should spend on a new Lowell High School or a renovated high school before the cost is considered just way too expensive or cost prohibitive, I mean, the process should be restarted? Is it 375 million, 350 million, 400 million?
So what do you, could you repeat that again?
The question is, the city still does not know precisely how much money it will cost to renovate any downtown high school or build a Colley.
Right.
At what point does the city just say, it's just too expensive? We can't afford it?
Well, I think a lot of communities are saying that. It's too expensive, and the reimbursement rate isn't high enough, and I think that the state needs to redo the formula because any community building a new school today needs help, and you need the support of the state. And the biggest thing is the quality of work has to be there, and the quality of materials needs to be there. So along with that price tag, these schools have to be built to last, and that's one of the biggest issues that nobody's talking about, is what you get for your money. So I think everything needs to be looked at, but I just think it's ridiculous that we go out to the lowest bidder. Another point that came up during the discussions was, if you're going to do a project that's a renovation project, I don't know why the work hours are still seven to three. It should be three to 11. If you want to bid on the job, that's the job. You work three to 11. It happens all the time in private industry. So I'm not putting anybody down, the unions, but they need to step up and say, yeah, school buildings get built three to 11 if it's at reno, and that's the job. That's the description. If you want to bid on it, you bid on it. So I think a lot needs to happen with how we assist communities with rebuilding high schools.
Thank you. Matt LaLasher?
Yeah, I think that the overall cost in the end is not what we need to be focusing on, though obviously, as that rises, our percentage will rise. I think what we need to focus on is how much are we, what is our percentage going to be? How much is going to come out of our pockets? And for every dollar that we spend of your money, because that's our job as counselors, it's to make sure we spend your money wisely, we have to do things like what John had said. We need to look to ensure that we're not necessarily just going to the lowest bidder, that we're building something that will last. That high school has done right by us for 100-plus years. The next high school that we build, regardless of where the location is, it needs to be there and be good for the community for 75, 100 years, whatever the number may be. So though there is no final number that is in my head that would stop us from moving forward, we have to be smart as we're looking at this. And I will say again, I think we need to work very hard with the state to try to get our percentage up. We are a city that has services for individuals that many of the suburbs and other people are not offering. We're bearing a burden that is higher than other places throughout the Commonwealth, and I think we should be treated as such, and we should be looking to get a higher percentage as we move forward.
Thank you. Marty Hogan?
Well, not to repeat everything that's already been said, but I think it comes down to the taxpayer. I think that every Lowellian out there that is paying taxes is worried about the amount that they're going to have to burden. And there are people on fixed incomes right now that I've gone door-to-door, and I'm sure all of you have, and they're all expressing the concern of, I'm on a fixed income, I can't even afford it right now. How am I going to afford putting in a brand-new school, you know, and having this diverted to me? We need to work with those people and make sure they're not burdened as much as, you know, as much as they can be so that they don't have to leave or, you know, their property goes into foreclosure, you know, things like that. We need to think of those people. We need to think about the fact that this is a 30-year process for the increase. We have to look at also, and I know most people don't want to look at it, but the other costs when we look at one side and the other, such as, again, roads, infrastructure, getting power to the building that's needed, any water, any drainage, that's going to raise all the costs. Right now, we have that downtown, and I just think that we need to be very cognizant of the people whom this affects, which is every single taxpayer in this area. So that's what I'm focusing on. There's no number because we can't put the number to the numbers yet, so.
Yeah, there's been some focus on the number. The question is more general. Robert Gignac?
Sure. I think, as my colleagues have mentioned, the figure is, it doesn't exist right now. In the reality, six to seven years ago, when we first started looking at this project, we were told it was going to cost roughly 250 million. And at that time, it was outrageous number, and now we're looking at over 350, and it's going to continue to go up. But we have to look at it as an investment. People move to a community with quality, high-quality school systems, and each and every day that we put this project off or we pause, which I think we're doing right now with the lawsuit, we're putting our children at risk by not giving them a high-quality learning environment they deserve. People are going to move out of the city because of that, and folks are not going to come in here and invest in our community as we need. We need to move forward, and the only way we can do that is with a high-quality education system, and our flagship school is Lowell High School. We need to commit to investing in that, and I think will pay off for many years.
Thank you.
No, it's an excellent question. I think ultimately, you're looking at the cost we did in '97 when you had $40 million invested into the high school, and a lot of folks, including the headmaster at the time, Bill Someris, wanted to take a look and move it out to Colley. I think at the time I started on the school committee, and that's a fact, look it up, I started on the school committee, the Lowell Plan came before us and ultimately said, let's move it to Colley, and there was two school committee members at that point that didn't want to do that. At that point, we were talking about a school that would have cost 100 to 140 million, and the Lowell Plan backed away at that point in time because they had two members of a school committee of six who didn't want to do it. I wanted to do it. I thought it was an important thing because we learned about science labs. I know Committeeman Leahy was on there with me. We knew our science labs weren't adequate. We knew that to compete, that this was an issue. We tried to make patchwork of it, and it never really worked. And ultimately, the city council preceding us ultimately voted to improve the Greater Technical School of Science Labs. So now you have kids competing to go to greater Lowell Tech who have science labs that fit the STEM technology and ultimately lead right into a good, high-quality college education. The point is, at the end of the day, if you don't do it now, you are going to do it later. It might cost significant money now, which it does. It will cost a lot more later. And to simply rehab it so it can fit your current budget today, you're going to be doing it 20 years later. And granted, I'm 50, I'll be 70 when that happens. Enough is enough. Let's do it right. I agree with what Marty is saying regarding the infrastructure costs. We need to take a serious look at that. There's a motion on the school, the city council that passed. All my colleagues, Mr. Leahy and Mr. Elliott, voted for it in terms of asking the state for additional funds. That stalled as everything else is stalled because we're being sued right now by our school committee. And I respect the school committee. They're all good friends of mine. They're all good-intended people. But at the end of the day, we have to do this. Failure not to failure this is a failure economics for the city. We can debate whether it's going to go downtown or Colley. I think Colley's better, but at the end of the day, we have to do it now. If we don't do it now, it's just going to cost significantly more. When I got on the school committee 12 years ago, estimating at 100 million, 110 million. Now you're looking at 350, we think.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Elliott?
Well, I think we're right on max. I think that over the course of seven weeks, we have found in subcommittee meetings, talking about the impact on commercial, the impact on residential, the impact of the budget from now and over the long run. So we can't afford anymore. In fact, we'll get to the point where this is very difficult to afford without, you know, without the tax increase. And we've been focusing on so many issues, which are important, of traffic and location, that we have somehow lost sight of the fact that we are not getting our fair share, in my opinion, from the state. When we're looking at a 55% or 61% reimbursement, when other mid-sized communities of similar median income are getting between, you know, 70% and 80%, we started out at 80%, we're down to a lower 55% to 61%. That's what we should be fighting with the state about, and I think that's the single most important issue moving forward. How do we pay for this? And, you know, the way I think we pay for this is by moving it to Colley and selling land where the existing site is to develop it into housing. It's not a pie in the sky. Housing is extraordinarily desirable downtown right now, between 300,000 and 400,000 are the estimates from the assessor. So can we afford to spend more? No. There are other priorities that we have in the city, and it's all about balance, and you just can't tax your way out of this, and that's the solution at this point. It's redevelop the site, bring in more revenue stream, you know, just a simple estimate of 100 units times our tax rate, and you're looking at 4.4 million. So that is the solution, in my opinion, if we're going to find one to get out of this.
John, you raised first, and we'll go to.
Okay. So I just wanted to add to that, that I don't, I would agree with what Councilor Elliott's saying, but we haven't even heard from the school committee yet, well, the superintendent, if they're going to give up Kirk Street, and I don't believe they are. So you've got to wipe that off the board. We're not going to develop Kirk Street into real estate. So there's no money there, and if we do something across the canal, then maybe we will, but there's no money coming from condos.
Matt LaLasher?
Yeah, I would rebut that a little only in that I think if the current school committee and the administration decides that they want to hold on to that building, and it directly affects the tax rate for the people of the city of Lowell, I think there will be a lot of people that will be running for office in two years that will be looking to look at what opportunities are there. I also believe there are other ancillary pieces, there are offshoots of revenue that are available if we decide to move out to Colley, which I believe is right. There are 600 parking spots in the parking garage, at the Aon parking garage, that would become available for the city to utilize. It may even put us in a position where we don't have to build an additional parking garage, which if we do, that's 30 to 40 million dollars that we would have to spend as a chance to potentially bring the school department into one of the two buildings if, for a period of time, where we're looking at rents at 400,000 and 500,000 dollars that we're currently paying. So there are other ways that we can offset any additional costs, and to Marty's point, there will be some that we'll have to incur. But in the end, an investment of this size, as Jim had said, an investment of this size needs to be done right, done with care, and I think we have the creativity to lessen the blow on the tax.
Thank you. Jim?
No, just to expand on what Matt's saying, ultimately, you have to pay for it. We have to build a police station. We all have toured the police station, and it's in complete, you know, it needs to be built again. You need to have different revenue to make that happen. I look at like the city of, town of Northampton, where they have different, Northampton, if you go to their downtown, it's a much smaller town, but they have a revenue stream coming in. They have Smith College. Smith College has a higher level of income than most cities have, so they bring in income and revenue to it. You can't expect high school students in anywhere in the United States to support a downtown because they just don't have that income. It's not fair to have a student do that, not just Lowell students, but any student. I've been in the private sector my whole life, owned my own company and startup companies. You've got to think innovatively. You cannot keep thinking the same way because it's historically advantageous to think that way. We have to pay for a new police station. That is going to happen. Whether we increase taxes significantly to do it, we will do it. I'd rather do it by having economic development, both in the Innovation District, which is finally starting to take off, and taking a look at the Kirk Street as well as the Field House, and quite frankly, the 1980 buildings are the buildings that we're looking to repair because they're in disrepair. If the school department comes back in and uses money to save for special ed, that's money that they can divert and help pay for other education, which they're going to do with the freshman academy. We have over $10 million in special ed costs today. It's probably higher than that right now. With Mayor Elliott and I were on the committee, we were raising the budget in the mid-year to pay for special ed costs. So that's not going down, it's only going up. We need to bring that in-house, and using some of those facilities is a proper way to do that.
Thank you. Marty?
There's just a couple of things I wanted to say. You fine gentleman I ran against two years ago, and the question of doing the school was there, and we were told that it could be as much as 70% to 80% repay. That didn't come true. The Hamilton Canal, which has been a whole process since 2008, that didn't come through. Now we're talking about development down in a school that we don't even know if we can get the building to do what we want, and my concern is, is we keep on saying, you know, we'll get it here. It's like when I was a teenager and I wanted to buy something, and I said to my parents, I'll give you the money back later, I promise. I just don't want to see this with our city because, again, with the taxes, it ends up hurting people. And the second thing to that would be that, Matt, there was a report today that said that the garages, there are business owners in downtown Lowell that are going to be affected by the fact that we're going to need to raise the prices at the garages and on our parking rates. That's going to hurt people. If we're going to build more parking, why, you know, if we're not going to be able to fill it because people are leaving town and businesses are leaving town, that's counterproductive to what we want to do. So I just, you know, I just don't see it as truly.
Hold on, just hold on. Just as you direct me. I think we have.
It's okay, it's okay. Let him go, let him go. He's on a roll.
You have a second crack?
I do, I do. I apologize. No, look, I respect Councilor Leahy's opinion, but nothing is off the table, in my opinion. These are tax, the taxpayers of the city of Lowell own this building, and, I mean, just look at the city of Lawrence, they, I don't even know who owns the city building, but it's vacant, and it's not part of the economic development. So, and if the building is not fit for a student population, you have to invest millions just to bring it up to code, why would we, why would the school committee want to hold on to it? The building's on the verge of being condemned. So it's real, it's real economic development. It's a way to change the face of the downtown. In order to bring tax revenue, we all campaign on economic development. How do we bring more businesses into the city? And this, housing is a viable alternative. Look at gateway cities throughout the Commonwealth. They're developing, including the city of Lowell, housing in their old mill buildings. People want to live downtown. That is the trend. So I respectfully disagree. I don't think it's off the table at all whatsoever. In fact, I think it's, I think it's very creative, it's not creative, it's realistic to bring in, we're not talking hundreds of thousands, millions. And by the way, that's a six-acre site. We're talking about one building to be developed, and who knows what the opportunities are in the future? So, you know, that's the first thing. The second thing, from an urban planning perspective, and I was a planner for the city for five years, the Hamilton Canal is commercial. We don't want commercial development per se strictly downtown. That's residential. People want to live downtown. The Perkins Loft is a perfect example. They want to be close to the train station, they're going at the bus, and they want to come back, and they want to live in an urban setting. So, you know, the Hamilton Canal, I also think the urban canal, we just supported two projects that was, you know, kind of brought to a standstill. Access for that site is the biggest problem we'll talk about later. Thank you.
Are you all set?
No, I just want.
Just make it quick.
Yeah, quickly, I just wanted to say, on the parking side of all of this, I think we may not have to raise rates as high as we want to if we're getting revenue from 600 new spots, so that's kind of the point that I'm making in that part.
Councilor?
No, I want to take, exactly. But you raise good concerns, Marty. I think at the end of the day, what I would say, when I started out believing in the downtown, it ultimately came down to, how am I going to pay for it? Because I know I have to pay for other infrastructures in the city, and you have to look at it differently. I think you're correct, though. At the end of the day, if it's not done right or thoughtfully, we could be in big trouble. But here's what we have to do. You have to do it.
Third question. This is a good segue to this question, starting with you. Do you foresee any circumstance, mass protests in the street, lawsuits, cost, that would Do you foresee any circumstance, mass protests in the street, lawsuits, cost, that would derail this project interminably? And, and downtown doesn't get done, Colley doesn't get done, South Common doesn't get done?
Is there a scenario? Yes, there, there is a scenario. I, I don't think that's in our past. I don't think that will be in our future. I think when Lowell has had tough decisions to make, we have a good history of battling it out, having a, a good time making sure everyone's voice is heard, and in the end, we do what's best for the city. It's how we ended up with a national park, it's how we ended up with an arena, it's how we ended up with a baseball stadium, it's how we've ended up with another, a number of things that have done, have done a very good job of pushing Lowell forward, of building the foundation for where we are here today. So I think when we get through this process, one of the two locations will be selected, and we'll come together, as Counselor Leahy has mentioned, and, and others. We will get our, we'll get our chance to have this out, come to a finish, and move forward. So I don't think that's how Lowell acts. I think Lowell is a can-do city. We will get done what needs to be done for the betterment of our residents, and, and so I, I don't believe that's our future.
So, I don't think that we're going to come to a, a total standstill. I don't think we're going to come to a point where we're not going to do something, just as Matt said. I also think that a project of such an immense size, and such an immense cost, if it takes longer to do, can be, can be accomplished. I mean, we're talking about 300 and, well, we don't know, but three, let's say 300 to 400 million dollars, okay? That amount of money, it should take time, and it should be the input of the people, like it's going to be on November 7th, and it should be the input of the different groups. In the end, I don't think that's going to be a question. I think in the end, what we have to think about, and I, I'm sure we're going to talk about this later, is not letting our high school get to that point again, and not letting our other schools, because we have, what, 13, 14 other schools that need repairs desperately? We cannot-
Twenty, twenty.
We, we, you know, we desperately need to make sure that maintenance is done, and preventive maintenance. And that's got to be a focus of the council, and that, that's, you know, something I'm looking to do.
I don't think we can afford to go down that road, and I, I don't think we're going to go down the road where the project will fail. I think right now, all of the elected officials in the city, all of the neighborhood groups are talking about where the high scho, high school should be, not should we get a new high school. And I think that's, that's enormous. A few years ago, that wasn't the discussion we were hearing. We were hearing 250 million, is that the right thing to do? Now we're just fighting over where should it be? So I don't think this community's going to let this project fail. I think at the end of the day, all the elected officials here, and, and that have spoken before us tonight, are going to come together and make sure this process proceeds.
Thank you. Jim Leary?
No, I agree. I think ultimately, I supported Colley, but at the end of the day, if the downtown site is the site that wins on the, on the 7th, and if the majority of counselors are for downtown, I think we need to get back and support it at that point in time. I think the keys are, like, what was just said earlier, I think the keys are, we have 20, you know, 26 to 28 other schools, we have a lot of other city buildings too that need to be maintained. We also have a police station that needs to be repaired or not replaced outright. I think some of the things that this council has done, for example, a motion that I had regarding combining the maintenance department and the Department of Public Works, the, the school maintenance department, or custodians into one department, that was voted upon and being studied right now, is a good start to helping that maintenance. So you can have really custodians in schools actually do basic repairs, which they're not allowed to do under the current standard of what their occupation is. So this council has taken that initiative. I think it's imperative that it works. If it doesn't, then we're going to be in a lot of trouble financially. I think as far as the high school itself, like I just said at the beginning, at the end of the day, on the 7th, once it's decided, we need to make sure we get on board to make sure we have a very successful high school, because this city needs it not only for the students, but ultimately for the taxpayers.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott?
No, I don't think we can go backwards at this point. I think the people want it done, they want it, they want to be able to move, move on, but they want to be able to move on with a level of confidence, and that we need to do what we, we, we've got some work to do, in my opinion, on cost, no matter where the location is. And we'll get, that will take place in the design phase. And my, right now, this is, these are all numbers, they're, I don't think they're pie in the sky numbers, they're, they're general estimates from professionals in the field. But moving forward, we need to, we need to develop more trust with the people that are going to vote for this and say, this is where we're at, but we know that we have some work to do. So I don't, I don't see this going backwards. It's, it's part of the progress of the city, it's part of maintaining and attracting families who come here. We invest significantly in education, we exceed our net school spending, we invest in public safety, and those are the things that are attracting new families into the city. And, you know, the real estate market is, is doing very well in Lowell. So middle, middle-income families want to come to the city, it's part of sustaining the city and moving it forwards. I, I don't, I don't think it's responsible to stop this process and start, so.
Fair enough. Thank you. Counselor Leahy?
No, I, I don't think there's any way that we're going to let this process fail at this point. We're going to battle it out, we're going to see what happens in the election, but there isn't any way we can let this fail, and we're going to proceed with whatever the outcome, I guess, you know, the direction that we're going to get from the election. But the other thing is, we do need to know the cost. So once we get some answers, you know, that's going to help us make a decision on where the high school should be. I know right now that, you know, I voted for the downtown site, but, you know, there are costs to both sides, both projects, and we need to know what those costs are, so we can end up with the best high school for the city.
That's been mentioned by many of you tonight. The next question, we're going to move to a different topic, goes to Mr. Hogan. Should Lowell adopt a different form of government, one that gives representation to individual neighborhoods?
I have been, since I started campaigning, fully for looking at and looking into, with the knowledge of the voters as well, because I want it to be out there, but I want to seriously look at a hybrid system for us at city. I think that we have nine dedicated counselors, we have nine people who look at the city and, you know, it, it, they, they do a hard job. But the problem is, is that you're looking at 30,000 feet of a city that is, you know, has 120,000 people in it, that's not very easily done. So I think that we should go to a hybrid system where we have elected district counselors that can take care of the, the at-home, as I call them, neighborhood problems, where if you have a, a street or a, a light or something like that, the quality of life issues that happen to every one of us as a, as a city, living in the city. I think that they can really see that for what it is and work on that. At the same time, I think you need to have at-large counselors, because the at-large counselors are able to see the full city and every, the issues that affect it on the whole. I would believe that the city counselors could work with the mayor, whether that stays with the appointed mayor, or a strong mayor system, to look at the city as a whole, and to work on it that way. So instead of having nine counselors, you would have, let's just say, five. You have four at-large, and you have one district counselor, okay? I think that you would get a better quality of coverage that way, just because I think that a lot of people are afraid of one system or the other. We've had issues with the at-large, people have had issues with the district. Our city has been both. I think it's time to do a hybrid where we have both. And I would also look into the strong mayor system instead of the appointed city manager.
Thank you.
I, I would be supportive of a, of a district representation with, with at-large counselors, but I would not be supportive of a strong mayor. I think we've, we've had great success with professional managers here in the city, and I think having district representatives, as I live in, in the Centerville section of the city, as does Marty, we haven't had an elected official on the council in many years. I've been fortunate to represent the area on the school committee, but I'm responsible for the entire city. And it's, it's very difficult to, to get to 28 schools and make sure I'm doing my job the right way. It's very difficult for the nine councils to get to each and every neighborhood and make sure that they're doing the right job for the, for the city. So I think having a combination is what's best for, for government, and it's what's best for our citizens.
Thank you.
No, I, you know, I got to say, when Counselor Elliott first brought this motion up for the council, I didn't even second it, I didn't even support, I didn't support it at all. And it's ironic, you know, I come from Western Massachusetts, my father was actually a ward city counselor. So it's an interesting, you know, dynamic that I didn't even support Counselor Elliott initially. And over time, as you look and you go back and you, you start to study, like, just talking to my own, my own, my father, it's actually, it's a pretty good system. And Counselor Elliott and Counselor Samaras, and I put a motion together to actually request an ad hoc subcommittee, which we have now, we're currently going around the, the city and having subcommittee meetings, talking to people regarding what form of government that they want. I think I've evolved significantly. I think the first thing I like, is I like to have, I like the Plan E form of government where the city manager is the executive officer, but I also like the idea of what Worcester does, who also has a Plan E form of government, of electing their mayor. I think we, we've done in history, nine city counselors elect a mayor, and that individual serves as the chairman of the school committee and a voting member of the school committee, as well as the city council. So the folks, so the people, the citizens of the city, don't actually vote for one member of the school committee, the chairperson, who selects the subcommittees and ultimately is the presiding officer. So I think that in itself should change. I also would be open to having district and at-large counselors. I think there's different ways of doing it. Where I grew up, it was, there was actually 11 city counselors, six at-large, five districts, so you had more at-large. Most communities like Worcester have more district and less at-large. I think going around the community like we are now is appropriate. I think ultimately, my opinion would be, we would bring some form of recommendation to the full council, whether I'm on the council or not, I think it should be brought before the council, and voted on, and brought finally to the people for, for a vote. But I think the people that we've spoken to thus far have a good confidence in what we have as Plan E, but are open to looking at the potential of change for districts and at-large counselors, and even electing a ceremonial mayor.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Elliott?
Yeah, yes, I mean, clearly I filed the motion, so I do support it, and I think it makes all the sense in the world. For this reason, balance, it's opportunity, and it's a practical approach. If you look at the, and it's the same way that our state and federal government, or Congress is run. You have, even on the state level, you have the US House of Representatives with this, which is district representation, and then you have the Senate, which is a larger, broader scope, same thing, and, and you have your chief executive and the governor. Same thing in the federal government, you have district representation from your United States Congress, and then within that state, you have senators that represent the whole with the president. So I, I think that this is just, it emulates exactly what's taken place. I think it's a good system. If you look across the city for, you know, for the last decade, where is the representation that's in the larger districts, where they're more voter-rich? So I, I think it makes sense, Centerville, South Lowell, the acre, you need balance, and you need balanced representation, and then you do need at-large, you need someone that will have a large global perspective. So I think it's, it's a good plan. I hope we move to it, just for the sake of the city, and a more fair and equitable representation throughout the city.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott, Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, I, I'm willing to take a look at it. Right now, I do like the system that we have. I just wish that, you know, more people would get involved. So I don't think it's a fair adjust, a fair assessment to say, you know, just because Belvedere and certain sections of the Highlands get out and participate and vote, you know, you've got to get everybody out there to vote. If you want to be heard, you have to go out and vote. So I'd be willing to look at it. I like the system we have right now, and I'm open to discussion.
Thank you. Challenger, Lashere?
Yeah, I, I believe it's definitely something we should explore. I think there are two conditions under which I would be supportive. First is, similarly, I'd want to see that in other areas, when a move like this has been made, it has driven voter turnout up. The big problem we're having, much like as John had just said, is that we're just not getting enough people out to the polls. And so my message at this point would be, regardless of what the decisions are made moving forward, you've got to get out, you've got to vote, especially in this election in particular. But my other piece to this is, I, I do believe the Plan E form of government has been good for the city of Lowell. I do think that having a professional manager, having someone that is accountable to the council, is, is a very strong way, and it's put us in a good position. But the hybrid model, as Counsel Leary, who I called Leahy earlier, I apologize, as Counselor Leary had mentioned, electing the mayor may be a nice way to, again, drive that turnout, to have people have their chance to come out and decide who's going to be the individual that represents them, be it ceremonially, as I think that's probably the way it should remain, but also that person's very important if they're going to be running the school committee, so there's another piece to that. So I think it's something we should explore, something we could definitely do, but I'd want to see, and I'd want to make sure that we're doing it for the reasons of driving turnout, and, and I think we should be staying in the Plan E form of government if we did.
Anybody else?
Just to touch on, on turnout, if we have district representation, you could, you could have a neighborhood race, and you can have three or four of your neighbors running, and those candidates can physically speak to each and every person in that district. Representing an entire city is very difficult, if not impossible, to do that. So you can draw out people just by having candidates in your face, having people that you actually know and you can have a conversation with, and I think this is a simple way to actually drive that.
We have time for one more question. Marty, did you-
I just wanted to wrap up with the, the voting, the ability for people to get out and vote. The only thing I would add is that in district representation, even if you have a low turnout, you still have a representative, you still have one. No matter what voter turnout is, you're mandated to have one at least, and they can deal with it. Now that may not be the best solution, but you have one, and somebody lives in your borders for that. And, you know, I don't know if there's really a correlation between voting and that type of form, but I would say that we definitely have to, the, the issue with the mayor, one other piece that I want to put into that, is that the mayor, just like everybody else that's elected to politic, in politics, is responsible to the people. A person appointed by the people that were elected isn't directly responsible, and I just, I, I think that our people expect more that way.
Okay. I think we have time for one more question, if we're, if we're quick. What are your, what are your thoughts on the higher stipends for city council and school committee members? You can start with you, Mr. Gignac. Last fall, the city council voted to raise stipends for counselors to $25,000 and $12,000 for school. What are your thoughts on that? Do you think it's really had the desired impact in this ele, in this election?
I don't think anybody in, in Lowell politics gets involved for the money. I know I didn't when I ran for school committee. I didn't even accept a stipend, I couldn't when I first got elected, and it doesn't, it doesn't change your life when you're making six grand on the school committee. And I don't, I don't think increasing it on either body is really going to make a tremendous impact on, on the, the quality of candidates. I think we have great candidates this time around, and I don't think that had anything to do with the salary.
I agree. I, I absolutely agree. The, we raised it, I voted for it, I supported it, it didn't have the desired effect. I think the issue why folks are running is directly related to the high school. That being said, when you're looking for a position that's important for the city, you should be paying appropriate wage for people that are doing it. It's, you know, people don't run for the money at the end of the day, they almost all accept the money at the end of the day, however, so, and some even take the health insurance. I don't take the health insurance, I never have taken the health insurance. Some who don't want to take the, the salary do take a nice pension, though, so they, they enjoy that at a lot higher salary. So it's an interesting comparison at the end of the day. But people don't run because of the money. They run because they love your city, and they love the, helping people out. I mean, I think we have, we had 23 people run for the city council, you know, I think all those individuals care about the city deeply. Now we have 18. I think these debates that we're having that show that folks that are running are, are serious, they're intelligent. There's some differences in, in opinions, but people are, are passionate and are articulating their position quite nicely. So I think you got a very good selection of folks. I think each and every one of them would be worth $25,000 to represent you on the city council.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Elliott?
Well, the council voted, but I was not one of those counselors that voted for it. And I didn't vote for it because two years when there was a debate at the Wang School, the very question was presented, and I said no, and I am a person of my word, and I stuck, I stuck to that. And I will not, I will take that money and I will just give it to charity, because if I didn't vote for it, then I don't, then I don't fair, then I think that's fair, and I think, you know, the paper reported. But I don't think it, you know, raising the salary, people, as was mentioned, they, people are getting involved because of the high, high school issue, and I don't think, you know, the desire, the desired effect on the school committee, we didn't see, you know, an overwhelming number of candidates come out, and that salary was, was doubled. Anyway, I think, you know, I think the way to get people more involved, again, is through district representation, where people don't feel, or they feel that they have a, a fighting chance to get elected versus if you can't raise thousands and thousands of dollars, and you don't have endless hours of time, and most folks are working, they have kids, they have activities, it just becomes a insurmountable task. they have activities, it just becomes an insurmountable task. So I think, you know, I do think the change will encourage people. They'll engage more and have more of a connection to their neighborhood and/or at-large representative.
Thank you, sir. Council Leahy.
Thank you. I voted for it. I thought that it would have a little bit more of, a bigger effect in this election, but of course with the high school debate, it kind of, it didn't give us the results that we were looking for. So, but I do think that, you know, you put a lot of time into being a councilor, and I think that the money does help, and we were hoping that, you know, people that cannot spend that much time without being compensated may decide to run. So the other thing that I brought up too is, you know, I think what we should also be looking at is maybe you look at term limits, because if you really want to get people and you want to get the turnover, you've got to have term limits. And maybe it's, you know, 10-year, 15, or 20-year term or something like that, but I think that needs to be part of the discussion. You can always run for all different offices. You just don't need to be in one particular office for, you know.
That was a question, unfortunately, we didn't get to it. Matt LaLasher.
I wrapped it all in.
Good job. I didn't know the question. You are, you've done this for a while. I can tell you, as first challenger, you know, answer the question. I know Bob's a challenger for the city council, but as being elected in the school committee, I did not make the decision to run because of what it pays. And having stepped into this atmosphere now, I can tell you, it is a lot of work. It is a lot of work if you're going to do it right. I've watched what the people who are elected that are here on stage and others that have come before you, what they have to do. If you're going to do the job properly, I don't think $25,000 is something that the people of the city of Lowell will find as exorbitant. I do believe we could potentially look in the future of potentially tying raises to something that's more directly to the voter, where the voter may have an opportunity to have a say in something along those lines, or potentially a cost of living increase that's fixed, much like in other areas. Things we could explore. But I also agree with Council Elliot, that I think if we're going to drive new candidates, it's not going to be the amount of money that we pay them. Having tried to hit as many doors as I possibly could all throughout the city in this process and continue to do, I can tell you it's really, really hard to do. And so looking for someone or a group of candidates that could focus on their areas they start and then potentially grow into being an at-large candidate, I think that's going to have more to do with getting the quality candidate than any amount of money that we pay.
Thank you. And lastly, Marty Hogan.
The way I see it is, is that I want to be involved in my community. I'm doing this because I, as you guys all believe, we want to do what's best for our community. We want to help out, and we want to be a part of this community and be a big part on the city council. What I disagree with, and I think you touched on, was the actual way that the council gave the raise. I think that the direct ability to give yourself a raise, nobody else can do that in business unless you own a business, and then you're not really giving yourself a raise, you're just getting the profit. I think that the way it should work is the people who are paying the taxes should be the ones that decide that. I also believe that, at the same time, politics should not be a career. This is not a career job. I do not believe, I believe in term limits. I do. I believe that you get in, you do the best you can, and you get out. I've always said to the people out there, I don't think anybody should serve longer than the President of the United States. That's the most important job we have in this land, and the President can only serve for eight years. So I do believe that, and I would stick to that if elected. I would also say that I think we need to get more people involved in civics, in the schools here and throughout the country, in order to get people involved in politics, because it is very important. We volunteer for nonprofits and for fundraising and all that, but a lot of people get turned off by politics and government because they think it's all fixed and rigged. I can't tell you how many people I've talked to out door-to-door that have said to me, "I don't want to vote because it never makes a difference." Well, I will make a difference. Just believe in me. And I'm sure all of you were the same way. But we should not make a career out of this. It should not be, and we should do what's best for the area.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. The time has come for closing statements. We'll start with you, Mr. Leary.
Mr. Leary, well, thank you very much for the opportunity. This format is excellent. We should have more time, because it's actually very thoughtful and very meaningful. Thank you for allowing me to represent you on the city council and on the school committee. I do agree, incidentally, and I want to add, that term limits were actually a great idea. I think I served on the school committee for five terms. I was fortunate, and my first time on the city council. Being on the city council, one of the things I enjoyed most is I actually have had a motion with every single city councilor, because, you know, you want to make things happen as a team. And I think I've done a decent job working as a team with my fellow councilors. I don't always agree with everyone, but I definitely try to work hard to have a good, solid debate and make the city a better place. I worked with Council Samaras. I worked with Council Leahy on many different motions. Council Elliot and I have had many different motions. When I was on the school committee, school committee member Gignac and I have had many different motions. I really want to work hard. I want to take my business experience. I've been in the private sector as a business owner, and right now I'm the vice president of a startup insurance company, creating opportunities and helping to create jobs. That's what I like to do. That's what I enjoy doing. I like to bring that small asset to the city council and help be a part of that team. On November 7th, I respectfully ask for one of your votes. I hope you've enjoyed the day, and I hope you're watching this on a split-screen TV as the New England Patriots are on right now. Thank you very much, and have a great evening.
Mr. Gignac, it's your turn.
Sure. Thank you very much to the Sun and LTC for hosting this. I agree with Council Leary. This has been a phenomenal format. I want to thank you for allowing me to represent you on the Lowell School Committee for two terms. Getting involved at 21, I never thought I'd get elected to the school committee. I'm truly grateful, and I think we've really brought our schools in the right direction. And for the first time, two-thirds of our schools are Level 1 and Level 2, and I like to believe I had a little bit to do with that. And on the city council, I will continue to fight for our education system. I will fight for economic development to provide tax relief to our residential taxpayers in an innovative way. And I will also address public safety issues, absentee landlords, expanding opiate abuse prevention and awareness programs. And for the high school, during my day job, I'm a director of finance and operations. Each and every day, I work to make sure I get the best bang for my buck, and I will do that for you on the Lowell City Council. I respectfully request your vote on November 7th. My name is Robert Gignac. Thank you.
Thank you. Marty Hogan.
Yes. My name's Marty Hogan. I am a candidate for Lowell City Council, and I come to you tonight to ask you to consider me as one of your nine votes on November 7th. As I just said, there are nine votes. I'm not asking you for the top. I'm not asking you for the bottom. I'm asking you for just one of your votes, because I think that we're at a situation in time where we need to have new thoughts, new ideas, and new leadership on the council. I'm a person who comes from Centerville. Centerville has not had representation on the council for a while, and it hasn't had dedicated representation. I want to work for the Lowell High School and making sure that it's built downtown. I want to work for making sure that we have budget to take care of our schools and to make sure the educators have what they need. I want to work with you and make sure your needs are taken care of, because that's really what our job is. We need to make sure that every Lowell citizen is represented equally and that you know that your council is working for you. I respectfully ask, again, for one of your nine votes, and I'm humbled to even be able to stand on this stage, let alone be considered, but I would be honored to be your next city councilor. Thank you.
Matt LaLasher.
Well, first, thanks to the Sun and the LTC. And as others have said, though, I'm a first-time candidate. I've grown up around this. To many of you, the last name may be familiar. My grandfather was Ed LaLasher, who the ballpark is named for in downtown. And so I have a deep understanding of the importance of Lowell, the importance of what constituent services are, as I learned from someone who I believe was the best. And now, as I move forward in my time, I have three small children. I'm a Pottokville resident, born and raised in the Highlands. Grandparents were in Belvedere. I've been all around the city. I've experienced all of what this city has to offer. I feel at this point in our history and as we move forward into our future, we have built a foundation that everyone should be proud of. Lowell is in a far better situation than many of the other gateway cities and other cities all throughout the Commonwealth. I'm very fortunate through what I do for a living as a small business owner and as the executive director of a small business association with over 1,900 facilities, to travel all throughout New England to see what New England and other places have to offer. And I can tell you, working with the state delegation in the past on issues, we have a chance to do something great right now. Don't allow this issue of the high school to be the only thing and the only reason you go to the polls. Please look at what all the candidates have to offer, what they're talking about for the future, how they're talking directly to you, how your pocketbook, how your wallet is going to be affected, and what vision they have for the future. So again, my name is Matt LaLasher. I am a supporter of Colley Stadium for the high school, but I'm hoping you'll look at me as a more well-rounded candidate, and you'll consider me on November 7th.
Thank you. John Leahy.
Thank you. I want to thank the Sun and LTC for inviting us here tonight to answer questions. My name's John Leahy, candidate for city council. And I too, I own my own business. I'm in the area. I'm in and out of the neighborhoods. My wife owns her own business. So we realize, you know, it's not easy today. And with projects like the new high school coming up, it's not easy to, you know, have taxes go up that much. So we realize what everyone else is, what everyone is looking at as we approach this issue of the new high school. We want the best product for our taxes. And that's our job as the council, to make sure that we spend your money wisely, because we need a new high school, we need to invest in the future, but we need to do something that we can afford. And I'm out there every day representing you the best I can. I feel like I've done a good job, and I hope that you can trust in me to send me to the city council one more time. And my name is John Leahy, and I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Leahy. And Rodney Elliott. I'm a candidate for reelection.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you to the sponsors as well. My name's Rodney Elliott, and I want to thank you for supporting me in the past. I want you to know that there's not a day that goes by that I do not forget the vote, the trust that you place in me when I go to the Lowell City Council chambers. My wife, I'm married to my wife, Laurie.